Right, let's have a tour. Let's come to order with the pledge of allegiance.
The United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the great unity and justice for all.
I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
My second question. Okay. The next meeting of the board selectmen will be on Monday, February 11th, 2019, at 5:30 here in the office. And a further announcement that we've received, a notice of a public meeting concerning the much awaited traffic signal on Foster's Point and Mendel's Road intersection. That has been rescheduled for February 5th at 6 o'clock. That's a Tuesday. And it will also take place here in this room, in this building. Any other announcements?
None.
All right. We're open to public comment if any of this comments. And we'll move to the first business item. Mr. Sam Saltynstall from the Bath Brunswick chapter of Citizens Climate Lobby.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for letting me present this evening. My name is Sam Saltynstall. I'm a retired schoolteacher. And after I retired, my main volunteer work has been related to the environment and different kinds of things. I serve on the board at Window Dressers, which has made 33,000 insulating window inserts for manors over the last eight or nine years. And worked on Peace Island with the Island Institute to help weatherize homes and help folks reduce their heating bills. And that's all sort of drop-in-the-bucket work, I would say. But as you read the paper these days and read of the increasingly depressing information about what's happening to the climate around the world, I started feeling like I should get involved with an effort that had big ambitions. And that organization is called the Citizens Climate Lobby. And I'm a member of the Bath Brunswick chapter, there are about eight chapters, I think, in Maine. And so I'm here tonight to show you some slides, a few slides about climate change, more slides about the only proposal that we are working for. We're not like the Natural Resources Council of Maine or the Sierra Club that do a number of different things. We are interested in seeing our federal government get in place a proposal that would reduce the greenhouse gas emissions that are causing a worsening climate. So let's get started. The sky is not limitless. It's a thin layer of air that makes life possible on Earth, along with the water, of course. And over the last 200 years, we have a population now seven times of what it used to be. And we are putting a lot of greenhouse gases into the atmosphere from burning fossil fuels. You've probably seen diagrams like this before. Basically, what happens is the sun warms the earth and the oceans. Some of the warmth is reflected back out into space. But those carbon dioxide emissions and other greenhouse gases in the atmosphere form a blanket that prevents some of those gases from escaping, and that causes warming. I would point out that we have no regulations on greenhouse gas emissions currently in the United States in place. The last proposed ones were the Clean Power Plan by President Obama. They're in the courts, and then President Trump decided not to implement them anyway. We're not in the Paris Agreement. We are the second-largest emitter of greenhouse gas emissions in the world. China puts out more, but they have 1.4 billion people living in China, and there are only about 380,000, I think, 360,000. So this is a graph that shows what's happened in the atmosphere since 1880, at the beginning of the Industrial Revolution. We started burning coal, and of course later began oil and natural gas. And the carbon dioxide line there, the amount of carbon dioxide in the air, which is now over 400 parts per million, is the yellow line. And the temperature, global temperature, has very closely tracked that number. And the result is that bad weather is made worse by climate change. These are images that I took off the news on TV. Temperatures of 117 degrees at the Van Nuys Airport in California. One of the forest fires burning in California. Nine trillion gallons of water dumped on North Carolina over four days by Hurricane Florence. And then Hurricane Michael coming ashore on the Florida Panhandle, rapidly increasing all this to a category five storm overnight, and the resulting chaos, damage from that storm. So one unfortunate global warming is here. And I would find that we're paying a sort of a carbon tax now. The National Climate Assessment, the fourth version, just came out in November, and it reported that we can expect over this century about, I hope I've got my numbers right, I believe it's 50 billion a year. I might have that wrong, though. I think it's 50 billion a year in costs related to climate change that relate to health, that relate to damage from storms and fires and other reasons. So doing nothing, we are still paying this carbon tax, but it's sort of arbitrary where it lands. It lands on people whether there's a hurricane, or a forest fire, or a flood, or whatever. So I've tried not to make a long list for you on this tiny screen, but there are a number of things going on in Maine that we're beginning to see. I think we may be more fortunate than other parts of the country, but we are seeing damage to the natural environment related to climate change. Loss of fisheries is related. We're very concerned along the coast about our infrastructure and the sea level rise that's expected. Property damage from more intense storm events, shortened ski and snowmobiling seasons, unpredictable weather, which makes farming more difficult, and increased health problems like asthma, tics, water quality issues, and health related issues. So we know that greenhouse gas emissions in the atmosphere are causing these problems, and we know that we have to stop burning them. But how can we do that in the time that we're being asked to do that? The Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change released a report this fall. That's a group of thousands of scientists from 80 different countries saying that we need to reduce our emissions by 40% in just 12 years. And that means a huge change in the way we do business. And they want us to reduce by 2050 to a 90% reduction in greenhouse gas emissions. So what do we do? Well, I think there are many different solutions, and I'm not here to just propose one that's going to be a perfect solution. That's certainly not the case. There are things we can do in terms of our own lifestyle choices that we make. There are things that the state can do. And especially with the new administration, there seems to be a renewed interest in doing something about climate change. But to do something significant, we really have to tackle it on a national level, and that is a daunting process right now. I'm here to propose that the first best step nationally would be to pass a law, bipartisan law, that would reduce carbon dioxide emissions by 40% in 12 years. And that legislation that our organization supports is called Carbon Fee and Dividend. So we are the Citizens Climate Lobby. We're a nonprofit. We are nonpartisan. We are grassroots advocacy organization focused on just this one issue. And we think that if our proposal is implemented, it will lead to a more vibrant economy, certainly improved health from better air quality, a more level energy playing field. We can talk more about that if you have questions later. A solution that appeals to both conservatives and liberals alike, that might bridge the partisan divide in Congress. In 2015, Stanford University took a survey, and the results showed that two out of three Americans would support a refundable carbon tax. And that's what carbon fee and dividend basically is. But how would it work? Well, first, Congress places a steadily rising fee on fossil fuels, so they cost The burning of fossil fuels causes a lot of health problems. There are 20,000 people in our country who lose their lives every year because of that air pollution, and it's much worse around the world. Second, 100% of the fees collected from the fossil fuel miners and petroleum industry, the fracking folks, 100% of the fees collected from them is directed electronically for most people in monthly payments to American households. So why put a fee on carbon? Getting back to the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change, they say that we can't let global temperatures go up now. It used to be 2 degrees Celsius. Now it's 1 and 1/2 degrees Celsius because climate change is happening so fast. And that's about 2.6 degrees Fahrenheit for those of you like me who are Celsius challenged. What would the fee look like? Well, it would be assessed upstream. You wouldn't be paying the fee to the government. The folks who dig the coal and refine the oil, or the people who send us products from other countries that are fossil fuel intensive, they would pay the fee. And of course, you know what would happen. Fossil fuels would be more expensive, and they would pass the costs on to us, right? They're not going to put them. So that would incentivize us to use less expensive other products that weren't carbon intensive. And this is over, you can remember, this is over, our goal is around 2050. This is a process that would go on for about 30 years. And what would the dividend accomplish? Well, that's the part that may appeal to some of the more conservative folks. It would be sent electronically to most families from the United States Treasury, and you could spend it any way you wanted. You could buy groceries with it. You could pay your mortgage. You could, if you were finding fossil fuels a little too expensive for you, maybe you'd make some changes there, like solar panels, something like that. How much would a household of four get, if there were two adults and two children under the age of 19? At the beginning of the program, your household would get just under $50 a month. 20 years later, you would be getting almost $400 on a monthly basis from these fees that have been collected when the carbon-intensive products come out of the ground. So these figures are not just pulled out of thin air. Citizens Climate Lobby commissioned a study called the REMI Study in 2014, which looked at the nine economic regions of the United States and the country as a whole, and also looked at what we could accomplish in terms of reducing the carbon dioxide emissions in the air. And I can't, there isn't time to show you all that REMI Study did, but it is available online. I do have one graph I wanted to show you that might interest you. The bars represent different groups of people, the elderly, family of four, low income, minority, poverty, folks in poverty, single-parent families. And the percentages above the graph show what percentage of that group would end up with more money in their pocket, according to this economic study. Can you see those numbers in the back? So some people would not end up ahead. And who would those people be? Probably many of them would be wealthy folks who have a carbon-intensive lifestyle. They may fly more. They may have bigger homes to heat. They may drive bigger cars. But the study suggested that overall, those folks would only pay a 2/10ths of a percent reduction in income. They would only have that small amount, and they'd be breathing clear air and healthier, put along with the rest of us. So carbon fee and dividend does good things for our country. First of all, it increases disposable income across the economy, and we think it will lead to a tremendous amount of innovation in the areas of renewable energy. Where would you stand? Well, you can go to our website, and if you come up with seven numbers that sort of quantify your lifestyle, you can get a sense of roughly where you'd stand, whether you've come out ahead or behind. But by 2050, we believe that this program will lead to a 90% reduction in greenhouse gas emissions, which is right in line with what the, which is almost what the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change says we need to do. And the heart there is suggesting that health would be improved. The study suggested that 230,000 folks would be spared from a premature death over the next 20 years. And as for the economy, the study verified that across the economy in many different areas, things would go well. Employment would, there would be many new jobs created. The bill doesn't deal with retraining folks who worked in the fossil fuel industries. That would have to be done some other way. But those numbers are diminishing. The number of people working in coal mines now is quite small. And then the last piece of this is that the program has to be fair to American business. And if American businesses are exporting products to a country that does not have a carbon fee, that the American business has to pay a carbon fee, there would be a rebate that would go to those companies. And if a foreign business was importing products to the United States from a country that had no carbon fee, we would collect a tax on that, like a tariff. And that would make for a level playing field for the American businesses that do trade across our borders. And it would also help prevent them from relocating overseas, which is the last thing we would want to see. I had a long paragraph on my notes, but I don't have it to read to you. But the Pentagon in the 2015 study was very concerned about climate change, the potential shortage for water, for food, and other resources that could lead to a national security threat. And of course, this doesn't, this doesn't just support the idea of carbon fee and dividend. It would support the idea of anything we can do to reduce the risks from climate change. So that's a brief description of the carbon fee and dividend proposal that we advocate for. You can think of it as a three-legged stool, a carbon fee, which would reduce our emissions, the dividend, which would help us. I mean, we're going to have, carbon-intensive products aren't going to go away forever. There will be people who have to adjust. They may not be able to afford an electric vehicle right off. There's lots of things that are going to require continued use of carbon-intensive products. So we get that. And then the third is the border adjustment. So how would we get this proposal implemented, given the current political situation in the country? I'd be the first to admit, it's a big challenge. But I think the answer, and Citizens Climate Lobby thinks the answer, is citizen engagement. We have to engage our political leadership to get something like this done. So I'll tell you just a little bit about Citizens Climate Lobby with some real-life pictures here. In the upper left is some of the main delegation that went to Washington and lobbied. We lobby in groups of five. We're very organized, very polite, very respectful. We'll meet with anybody in Congress and learn about them before we go and ask. We always have an ask. If it's a very enthusiastic person, we might ask for more than someone who's not so enthusiastic. But that's part of our work. We, I believe we are 80,000 people members in the United States and 100,000 overall internationally. The upper right is some of our staff. And the lower picture is actually a picture of the convention of the Canadian Citizens Climate Lobby, which has just been very successful in persuading Prime Minister Trudeau to implement a carbon fee and dividend program in the eight remaining provinces that don't already have one. So that's why they're up there. Here's a picture of a group of us meeting with Annie Custer. She's a representative from New Hampshire. Down below, we're in some sort of a seminar, learning more about carbon fee and dividend. And there's the whole of us in front of the Congress Building. And over on the right, we're tabling, probably at a farmer's market or something. And then we work hard to get information into the papers. We've had quite a few editorials and letters published in The Times Record and other papers. Attitudes are shifting in Congress. A lot of Republicans won't admit their concern publicly, but in the House of Representatives, there is a House Climate Solutions Caucus, which was largely instigated by a fellow who volunteers for our organization, who worked tirelessly over 10 years to get that started. And the interesting way you get into this caucus is you have to bring somebody from the other party with you. If you're a Democrat, it's got to be a Republican, and vice versa. And so one side isn't outnumbered by the other, as might otherwise happen. It's interesting, though, in the election, some of the Republicans lost that were in this group. It was up to 90 people, and now I think they have to rebuild. So the most exciting piece of this, and probably the reason I'm here today, is that just a few weeks ago, two bills were introduced at the end of the 2019 legislative session. These are national bills in Congress and Washington. They're almost identical. One was introduced in the House, and one was introduced in the Senate. They were introduced by both Republicans and Democrats, smaller numbers of Republicans than Democrats. But they are almost identical to the proposal that I showed you of the slides of carbon fee and dividend. And that's why we think they make a lot of sense. They are effective, good for people, good for the economy, and they're revenue neutral. In other words, they won't grow the size of government. There are some main communities that have already endorsed the carbon fee and dividend, Portland, Bangor, Brunswick, Fairfield, Vinalehaven, Harpswell, and Belfast. And we would like to invite you also to endorse our proposal. And that's the end of my presentation. I have a folder for each of you that has some information in it. And there's no hurry, if you want to talk about this and have us revisit. Happy to do that, or get questions answered. But thank you very much for letting me present.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have any questions? Do you have any questions?
I do. I do not. We could, we could take a few minutes if there are questions from the assembly. Do you have a question?
Yes, I do. That looks all very good on paper, but I think it's very, very vague. What I'd like to know is, I see what the ground floor is, what you're doing, and I'm hoping you can give me a good, honest answer to what my question is. What is the end result of, when this is all said and done, might not even be in my lifetime, I don't know, but do away with fossil fuels completely?
Cleaner air, an economy that remains strong. Business as usual suggests that by the end of the century, this is the fourth National Climate Assessment, that we would have a 10% reduction in gross domestic product if we keep going on without trying to do something about climate change. So I think health, clean air, and certainly a better situation for the natural environment, the animals and plants that we rely on as human beings.
Well, maybe I can be a little bit more precise, so you can answer a little bit more clearly for me.
Can I just ask you, were you saying, were you asking, is our end result, are we hoping to end the use of fossil fuels?
Yes.
Is that...
To do away with fossil fuels, we're dependent on, let's say, whatever you can come up with, electricity, or solar, or something like that. But you do away with oil, gas, nobody burns wood, do away with propane. Is that the end result down the road? Maybe not in my lifetime, but that's what this is for?
That's what the scientists seem to be saying we need to do, 90% by 2050.
Okay. That's where I think everybody, especially here in this room, ought to really think about this. We're from Maine, okay? We're very dependent up here on oil. We're very dependent on wood, secondary, some people burn it, whatever. We're dependent on gasoline. We're dependent on propane. Okay? If everybody, let's say just tomorrow, in a perfect utopia, all that disappeared, we had to go all of a sudden to solar and to electrical.
Not all of a sudden.
Well, even so, over a period of time, people that have furnaces are going to have to have them taken out, and whatever these new band-angled things are going to come into play, and have it replaced. People are going to have to do away with their cars. They're going to have to do with anything that has gasoline, and go to whatever else. Who's going to pick up the tab and pay for all of this being done? Is it coming out of all of our pockets? Or is it going to come from the government, or where's it coming from?
Yeah. Yeah. I just had another question. It was a little bit off. Sorry about that. If I'm not mistaken, carbon tax has been used in other countries before, and with good results. Am I correct about that?
Used before?
Carbon tax has been used before. It would have been the results, because, I mean, there are ways that, you know, energy companies could try and jimmy this by pumping out more oil and reducing the costs. But carbon tax has been successful, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah. You can find anything you want on the internet, pro or con. British Columbia is an example. Some people think it's been a great success, others think it has not. My understanding is that a number of Northern European countries have instituted carbon fee and dividend. fee and dividend. But every country does it a little differently, and so it's hard to just paint with a broad brush and say that any carbon fee and dividend proposal is gonna work. We, uh, you know, we've paid a lot of money for this study, and we think that it will work. And Michael Jones, who's a retired Oden Economics professor, also thinks it will work. He's one of our members. So I don't have all the answers, and I understand your concern. I would say that our website has a lot more detail than I could pack into twenty minutes. So if you're interested in reading more about it, go to the Citizens Climate Lobby.
And I have another question. As far as the dividend and stuff go, that's very vague about who gets what and how that's spread around. Naturally, if you take everything that admits carbons, and you're gonna start putting a tax on those, like you said in the beginning of your presentation, all the fees are gonna be just like manure running downhill. Where at the bottom are gonna get it? So that means everybody's gonna pay more for their gas, their oil, their propane, which is already pretty costly, but they're gonna go up even more. If they have to pay a lot of fees, they're gonna pass it on to us, 'cause they're not gonna pay for it. So that means all of us are paying all that much more, so what little bit we grab the dividends, how's that honestly gonna offset? And be fair, we're gonna be paying more than we are collecting.
The dividend is paid out on a per capita basis, so if you're a wealthy person, you're gonna get a relatively small amount compared to your income. If you're not a wealthy person, you're likely to end up with more money in your pocket.
I'm gonna call this informational session to close. We have a big agenda and actual business that we can and must conduct this evening.
This, this discussion's more appropriate for a public hearing than it is a...
I would hope you people would do that before you decide to go along with anything, and open it up to the taxpayers.
Any, any decision, this, this is an informational session, there's no, no decision intended to be made this evening. My personal feeling would be that this would be a topic that would be much more appropriate if we were going to have a decision made for a town meeting, rather than the select, the three of us making a decision on behalf of the town. So...
I agree.
Yeah, that's fair.
If you are a resident of West Buck, please make your wishes known for further discussion, and we can make that arrangement. Thank you for the question.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And on the topic of energy, we have had an energy committee...
Oh, my goodness.
And we're all...
I think CNP just answered.
And the energy committee is ready to make some recommendations to us. So take your way, energy committees.
Pretty simple, as far as the... We had three auditors conduct it. We interviewed the three applicants, and went over their presentations and programs. We narrowed down revision energy. They seemed the best presentations, seemed to know what was going on. So our next step is to finalize their plans for the school and town office. And shortly, we wanna have a meeting with the school and the, and the town office. Probably got the school and eyeing out any kind of glitches that might be, or is, or deposed, or changes to the electrical system, the light, and those sort of things. We're not quite sure what the savings that we beat the town, in the long run, as time goes on, is gonna finalize those numbers for us. The program is filed, efficiency main goes, what they give the town, the rebates will change in April. The better the worse, who knows? So we have some time to study this. But the next step will be immediate, with all the parties and eyeing out more things.
So your recommendation is that...
Revision energy.
That we accept the...
No, not except yet. Just wanna let you know.
Pursue?
Yes. Our committee has chosen revision energy as the out-of-top choice, but we do want to have one more meeting with them. And they'll set an engineer down, and the personnel manage the program for the school and town office, if we go forward. But there's no decision tonight, as far as the board goes, just that's our next move. We'll speak one more time with revision energy, and all of you, as well as the school board.
Okay. Do we need anything official on that?
Nope, just an update for you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you for coming.
You all ended up working hard on this thing, and, and I know that some of the difficulty is making sure that people are available all at the same time, all those...
Can be tricky.
Can I just say, I recuse myself from all the hard work.
Oh.
Because I hesitate back and forth.
And, uh, Mr. Mitchell was very upfront about that. He backed it up, and it came down to deciding who, what, and where, and why. He didn't want to be involved in any kind of a problem there.
Well, I appreciate your honesty and that you brought the possibility of energy savings to our attention as well. Do you think we'll have something ready for town meetings, or...
Best-case scenario, in my opinion, certainly by town meeting, but if we find out we can make substantial savings by doing this, the committee's inclined to ask the board for a, a special town meeting on this, if there's enough savings. If we can save several hundred dollars a month, came down in June, why not save it? That'll be decided later.
That would make some sense.
Soon or later.
Okay, well, thank you. Keep on giving on. Business item number three. The investment committee has met this evening, and they have some recommendations.
Okay. Couple things that we covered. One thing, right now, the account, money in the fund is a little over six hundred and nine thousand dollars.
Six hundred and nine?
Yeah. A little, uh, day-to-day, we're interested in that. Where we are, we have a note, or I should say, a CD with Bangor Savings that just matured, and that's what we're looking to do. And it's a hundred thousand, and so we had a discussion about a couple of different things, and we're gonna be looking for some input from you folks. Because the question gets us, in the model that we presented at the town, we set up this little fund, you know, we looked at what's gonna happen, and where's it gonna come from, and where's the method, and the whole thing. If we set up this fund, the first thing is the sand salt shed. The second, most likely, is going to be a fire truck, and we're getting to that point. So our discussion was on how liquid we have to be at what time, because the truck, and we're willing on the premise that the next time the truck can come up, or rule by the townspeople, is gonna be the next town meeting. So, uh, we don't have to be liquid until at that point. And as it stands right now, we have two other CDs that mature in July. So if, if it's a town meeting, you know, we vote to go purchase, and then it goes through the process for the RFP, you know, the specs and the RFP and all that, the money that we have by the town meeting will know what to do with the July money. So this money, we, we decided we should invest it for one more year. So, you know, 'cause if we end up doing everything out of the fund for a fire truck, then that will ensure that we have it by the time the truck gets delivered. So that's what we decided to do, is invest one more year on this note for a hundred The other thing we discussed about this whole thing was, is the actual money, because traditionally, we've gone in a warrant item to have money appropriated in a warrant to go back into the fund, pay back for the sand salt shed. So these are some of the things that we need you folks to think about as the budget's being worked on and the warrant. One of the things, you know, is in lieu of having a warrant item of hitting a mill rate with, as we said, fifty thousand, is the sort of number we had, we figured for paying back the sand salt shed. In lieu of that, money from real estate sales, in other words, we have money from the Wayne Farm sales. We potentially have money from other, um, sales of real estate from taxes, you know, not paying taxes. So are we going to, in the warrant, uh, structure of warrant, whatever, but say, rather than raise, tell the townspeople, rather than raise the mill rate by appropriating fifty thousand, we're gonna use the Wayne Farm sales money that's sitting in the general fund to go back into the fund, so we don't affect the mill rate? So, you know, for us, we need, you know, where the process is going with the town budget warrant, so that we can help make decisions on full liquidity of the investment fund.
Right.
What's going in. And I think the other thing we talked about was being transparent, because when we set this thing up, and Bob, who's not with us tonight, he's up skiing in Montana, has been, you know, our ethics guy, and always said, you know, we have to be transparent, and one of the things we promised the townspeople in this thing was, is money that the town gets goes in this fund, and when appropriate, comes out. So the question is, you know, like, Wayne Farm money, all goes in, and then ten seconds later, because there's two warrants, one warrant to put it all in, and then the next warrant is to take it out to pay down the fire truck or whatever. Rather than the select board appropriating money out of the general fund, no one ever kinda know on what happened with the Wayne Farm money. Those of us involved know, but it's not really out of the table, you might say, to the voters at the town meeting, the members of the town meeting. So that's sort of our suggestion, that, um, as everyone works on the budget and the warrant items, that, that should be, again, as Bob says, let's be transparent. This is what we promised everybody.
Essentially, your suggestion is that we would use the sale, the proceeds from the sale of Wayne Farm and, and/or other tax-acquired properties to pay back the fifty thousand?
Right. And that, and that we, you know, put that right on the table to everyone.
Right.
We've said this, that we're gonna do this, and this is how we're doing it, so we're not affecting the mill rate, which makes everybody happy, you're not affecting the mill rate for the next tax year. So we'll put it right out on the table, so everybody knows where it's coming from. Even if all we're doing is taking something out of the general fund, booting it in, and then the next thing we're doing is writing a check, the town treasurer's writing a check for a deposit on the fire truck. At least everybody knows how the money's moving around.
And the votes are here.
And we're doing what we promised originally with the fund.
Yeah, that way, there's, there's less chance of misunderstanding or questioning on where the funds came from.
Exactly. There's a lot less of, as it's been in the past, Peter, myself, Paul, explaining all this stuff at town meeting.
Right.
It's a lot more visible, and we're doing what we said we'd do up in the beginning. So anyway, so it's gonna be two cents to where we're going. The other thing, a couple other things we came up, we're gonna be doing in our next meeting, is the town investment policy that we operate under has to be reviewed. We have it in there, and so we're gonna be in that. And, um, also, the Portland Trust, um, that was done back in May of 2017, and it has people on there for authorization of moving the money. And remember, we don't do anything.
Right.
We, we have no authority, no fiduciary responsibility, we're just advisory, but there's select people...
For this fund, right, right.
...that aren't select people anymore, you know, so that needs to be looked at. And technically, the treasurer, not as we had, the placement of the money, because the placement of money in the past year or so had been done, you know, you gave Adam, Town Administrator, authorization to place it. Technically, it should have been the treasurer.
Right.
And we should move to that and document that in the policy.
Right.
And then the backup, if the treasurer's not available, and we have to do this stuff in twenty-four hours, would be the Town Administrator, and then perhaps the chair. But we're gonna discuss this next meeting and bring it out to you folks as a recommendation.
Okay.
So I just wanna give you a heads up. The policy's pretty good, but, you know, now we're realizing that what we've been doing, is we need to tweak it a little bit.
The policy statement also says that the Town Administrator would be the go-between between the, any financial advisors external and the select board. So Christine was going to, um, talk with Portland Trust about changing the names on the contract.
Right.
The thing is, is, you know, after Adam left, it kind of got, we had, we had a CD matured, and placed it. And Jimmy Claude, our broker with, with the trust firm, you know, was looking at me to do something, and I had to keep, I got on the phone with him, I says, "Jim, I can't do anything. I have no legal authority, period. No fiduciary responsibility, period. Taken from a guy who moves a lot of money every day. I can't touch this. This is town. It's nothing to do with me." So, and that's how we ended up with you in that transition, too.
We also didn't really understand that the treasurer wasn't being informed about all of the details in the process of managing these funds that she needed to be informed about.
Right, right. And I believe that situation has been corrected.
I certainly hope so.
We sure know about it anyway.
We do.
So anyway, we, as I said earlier, we have a CD that matured, Bangor Savings, a hundred thousand. We wanna place it for one year, that's our recommendation, based that we're gonna have liquidity in July if we need money for a fire truck, if that's what the next big purchase is gonna be for the town we need. So we came up with two recommendations, and you know, we tend not to be, in fact, we are wild investors, we're a bunch of...
We like that.
Money, money people and asset managers who are highly risk-adverse. So anyway, so we made our usual, our prime recommendation and a backup recommendation if the market changes and that the first one's not available. We did not get, usually we get the list on Friday, which we did, and usually on the Monday morning before we meet this morning, we did not. I asked Jim, "Where is it?" He said, "Hasn't been released." So we didn't have a backup list, so hopefully, our first one's still good. Anyway, our first one, uh, again, for a year, was East Cambridge Savings, which is Cambridge Mass-based, they have twelve branches, they're a pretty strong local savings bank, uh, they do, you know, um, general business, you know, personal banking, but they also do a fair amount of small business, banking and loans. They don't do any big real estate, and that area in general, Cambridge, Mass., is a strong market. So with the, for one year CD, we're not gonna have any problem with that. That's a two-point-four-five percent coupon. Our second choice, um, again, one year, is TCF National Bank. This is a bank in Minneapolis, uh, they're a large regional, the only players in that market bigger than them is like Bank of America. They're big, they're strong, huge portfolio. Uh, that region's a strong region. You know, you know, traditionally, we've looked at some other banks in Midwest and all, um, and the problem with them, they do a lot of agricultural loans, which are not real good right now because of this whole import duty stuff with China. It's like, they're gonna have some notes that go real sour fast. So even though they look good in the past, we've stayed away from... So those are our two that we're giving to you as recommendations tonight. And the second one is a two-point-three percent. So the rates are considering right now are pretty good. So that's, that's it. Hopefully, they're both good. If not, we'll have to do a, sit on the money for another two weeks and give you another recommendation for the next meeting. Generally, what comes out of Friday is usually, uh, Monday. The stuff, the trashy stuff is what gets tossed all over again, not the good enough. The good banks don't take themselves off the list generally, that short period.
We need a motion.
I, I think, I'd like to move that we consider a recommendation for the East Cambridge Savings Bank in Massachusetts for two-point-four-five percent. Interesting.
Would you add it in the backup?
Do you want to add this second choice?
Just in case.
Oh, yeah, okay. And if that, if that fails for whatever reason, then we go with TCF National Bank in Minneapolis for two-point-three percent.
And then second, that motion? Is there any further discussion? Do we need to... Do we need to include the instruction to Christine to instruct the treasurer?
Yeah. Yep, we do. And that we should, um, ask the town administrator to inform the town treasurer of the goings on.
And I'm gonna duly copy her, because it's been town administrative currently, who's been on my list. But I'll, I'll add in the town treasurer and the communication that I generally do for the advisory committee with McLeod, our broker at the trust company.
Good.
That way, um, because now it's been, everything's gone to Carly, but she's put it in her package. I apologize for not getting it to you folks, to her earlier to get it tonight's package. Uh, DC would have a granddaughter, anyway.
Okay. Carly, could you give us the motion again?
Um, so Peter moved to accept the recommendation for East Cambridge Savings with the backup, uh, recommendation of TCF National Bank, uh, along with the instructions that the town administrator inform the treasurer of the investment decision.
Is the second still good?
Second's still good.
All right. Are we ready?
I'm ready.
All in favor of the recommendations?
I think our bases are covered.
Very good.
I do have a question about the future. Is there any, uh, potential, after the fire truck? Is there any potential capital investment project that the committee's gonna need to be aware of further out? That we, that we know of?
School roof.
Perhaps what we're kinda asking, because the school has been our fictitious hundred thousand dollar oops we have to pay for at some point.
The school roof is, it's gonna be a three-year project, it's not, it's not a, you know, one-year deal, it's three-year project. And I think they plan on starting north this coming year, the year after, I think is what it is.
How big a project is that? Much is that?
I think it's around, at least two hundred thousand, I think.
Okay. That's important. Any, and so that'd be over three years?
That was, that was what I was told last year, it's gonna be a three-year project.
All right.
So they're gonna do the work in three sections, three years.
Yes.
And the question is, is how much they wanna put into the school department's capital and major renewal budget versus, um, a loan from the investment committee?
You don't really know that yet.
I know, but that's the question that we'll raise with the chair of the school committee, you know. How you, how do you propose to finance it?
Yeah.
Well, how do you propose to do this work? So we can help finance it.
History tells me that the school's gonna wanna, um, probably not contribute anything toward it.
Yeah, they'll do their other stuff, like, we need to spend ten thousand dollars on controls on the boilers or whatever.
Yep.
This is gonna be all on the town and not on the school budget personally.
I guess this, uh.
That's a different discussion.
This large capital investment, this large, um, would require, um, a sit-down and serious discussion with the school and figure out.
Well, we need to, a plan going forward, get the exact dates when they're gonna do it, and more exact money, what it's gonna cost, because that's just what I'm thinking back to last year, so.
Well, you know, the other thing is, is what to expect for the work, to make sure that the RFP that goes out, you're getting the same quote, uh, you're getting a quote for identical work back, because they're.
Well, that would be the schools.
Yeah, well, having done a lot of roofs, roof, a roof is not a roof.
No, that, that's the schools.
Ask for a lot of stuff.
That's the school proposal, the plan.
Yeah.
All right. All right, so that's something that we definitely have to work on. And probably we oughta have our ducks in a row by before town meeting, middle budget season, probably.
Well, you need to get a reasonable budget number by having a couple of roof companies look at it. But the actual thing, you've gotta be able to go out there and say, I want insulation of this type, I wanna tape it so it goes to the drains, blah, 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 blah.
I think they have a, a qualified number already.
Well, that's all, that's all I really need for this, until we actually go out. And then you've gotta really, you know, have the specs.
There's nothing else beyond that, though?
Not that we know of. Well, the, the setup that could blow up any day.
Well, the other thing, it won't come out as, the Sabino Road may be a major expense.
Do we have to?
Yeah. In Bridge Point.
At Bridge Point's well, they're not.
The road is being eroded on the seashore side.
Ah, yes. Firemen change trees.
So those are potential, but those were potential expenses, they'd be expensive.
Yeah, yeah.
And we have to feed the bank behind.
Those are town roads?
Yes.
Can we get, can we get state funding? Can we get state funding for any of that?
For the Sabino, for the Sabino project, for the Sabino project, we have, um, secured a hundred thousand roughly grant, which offsets almost half of the, the cost of the project.
And, and the town is looking into potential other grants or monies for, uh, Bridge Point Road. Christine assured us she would find all the money and grant money, but.
Okay.
But the Sabino Road project, Sabino Road project, we won't need to find, we won't need to provide funding for this coming town road, we'd be.
Yeah, right.
So the fund may or may not be.
It may not be practical to do that.
Helpful for, for any of the, for those projects.
Yeah.
Do you have a question?
I'm just thinking that statewide need for infrastructure improvement is clear.
Yes.
And I wonder if there's anything, I mean, I can look into, is there anything statewide? I was hoping we could get DOT, but if there's some bond, there's some bonding, could see. I'll look it up.
I think.
The Bridge Point Road is eroding underneath the road.
That's a new one, isn't it?
The last, sad last summer.
Couple of years, right.
We've survived. We've been officially studying it.
We rebuilt it, uh, twenty-five or thirty years ago.
But the sea level's up since then, and the storms are more intense.
The, the storm surges on Bridge Point.
In southwest wind.
Yeah.
Can get a conservation grant for the salmon. All the salmon use the culvert Sabino.
Salamanas, I think, not salmon.
How many other?
Still a conservation grant.
How many other roads in the town are vulnerable to this sea surge?
Um, gonna use Austin Road is.
The radio teller.
Austin Road is going to be, um, down at the bottom of the hill.
Mm-hmm.
Is going to be vulnerable to rising tides and storm surges.
Long Cove Hill, the bottom.
Anything with guzzles.
Yeah.
And while the state of Maine is proposing to, uh, here to repair the Berry's Mill Road Ridge Causeway, that's what the effect it is right now.
We got roads, we got issues. We got problems. Uh, the next item on the, um, agenda is, uh, the review of Raise the Floor. Uh, you, we will recall that we had a visit from the gentleman, Mark Robinson, who presented, um, information about a, a proposal that they were developing, um, on behalf of minimum receiver communities. And he has, um, there is now a bill that has a sponsor. Um, Senator Mark Lawrence has sponsored it. You have a, a copy of the bill in the packet. I emailed our representative and asked, um, what the potential was for relief of, uh, for minimum receiver communities in this legislative session. And she literally answered the call. And here she is. Jay, um, can you tell us anything about this?
Well, I don't, I don't know yet. I, I mean, I think the question is, what will the temper of the legislature be toward this issue? And it hasn't been good about minimum receivers. However, I'm, I'm, I'm hopeful that there will be something. We had the emerg-, um, Adam Garland and I met with DOE, a couple of years ago now.
Yes.
There was some emergency funding, but that was so limited. I'll talk to Mark Lawrence, he's, um, chair of the, of which committee? One of the committees. And is a, was in the House, is now in the Senate, he's a, he's a great guy.
Good.
So I'll talk to him and see what he thinks. But what I put to staff, whether it's a policy expert, that I put this, your question to, to say, in the big picture, what are we looking at? And if you look at the whole body of legislative bills and department bills and where are things meaning? So we have a new commissioner of education. We had, or we're, we're about to.
I don't think we do yet.
Yes, elect. And you know, she's from Brunswick, she was assistant superintendent in Brunswick. Um, and we've had, up until this point, we've had, this last session, we had six different commissioners.
Yes.
One of whom was the governor. Um, so too much change for a, uh, global view. So that's what I need to find out. Um, I'm actually presenting a bill to the Department of Ed-, the, the Committee of Education on Wednesday. Um, in the meantime, I'll be checking with DOE, but I will also see them in person then. So I'll see what I can find out. Um, but some, some of it is just, what are the possibilities? It's probably more what I'll be able to get than anything definitive, because it all has to go through the process.
Right.
But let me, I'm asking the policy people, I'll check with DOE, you know, and find out. Part of the issue with the Raise the Floor is they're asking the town to buy in to supply some funding, is that right?
Yes.
Yeah, for their effort to push this forward.
Right, right.
Um, and I'm not sure I would be in favor of passing in, um, passing on the cost to the town, but I might personally be willing to support such a thing. But don't we have a state law that says that we're supposed to get, what, fifty percent funding?
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five percent? Uh-huh. So if we actually funded that, we probably would need this, is.
Well, that's a good question, because how does that affect minimum receivers? It, it would have, it should help, but it wouldn't be.
I don't think that with the fifty-five would increase our income from that fund too much.
No, it wouldn't be much.
Because we're still minimum receivers, so we get zero.
So zero plus zero.
Is still zero.
Still equals zero.
My limited understanding of, of, um, of the, um, minimum receiver, isn't, isn't that an allocation issue rather than a cost, um, cost control issue? Isn't it an allocation of a finite amount of money?
Well, they never, they never funded the fifty-five percent.
Well, I know that, but let's say, let's pretend that they did.
Well, we're still minimum receivers, so if it, unless I change the formula, I don't see.
But I mean, isn't the minimum receiver issue, isn't that an allocation? How, how it's parceled out, it's not.
Yeah.
It's not an actual cost issue.
That's my understanding.
Yes, that makes sense.
Yeah, because it doesn't matter whether it's a billion dollars or half a billion dollars.
Yeah, so.
That DOE is.
So.
It's authorization.
The purpose of this bill is for certain parties to, to raise more funds to their benefit, but it's actually coming out of somebody else's pocket, because the cost is up.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, on that premise, I wouldn't support it.
Yeah, because it doesn't actually, it would help us by hurting somebody else.
Right.
That's not fair.
Well, didn't, didn't he say that this was not gonna come out of the school budget? It was a separate fund?
This would be a separate fund, this wouldn't be out of that, not out of that matrix.
But along the way, the money would come from somewhere.
If the purpose of this plainly and simply, you know, without any fluff, it was plainly, plainly and simply to get the legislature to pay even the fifty-five percent, never mind, you know, what the real needs are out there, then I'd be all for it. But if West Bath wants to ding the city of Portland for more money so that we don't have to have quite such a burden, I wouldn't be for that at all. It's not fair.
Right, if it's a finite pot of money.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's an allocation.
Yeah.
Yes.
I think that was the premise, that it wasn't, not gonna come from the school budget, it was gonna come from a separate fund, from the general fund, so-called, I believe.
Exactly, so this would ding something from the general fund, not school funding.
Not school funding.
Pull from another.
From the general fund. Either way, someone's.
Someone could get hurt.
Someone's gonna lose something or not gain something.
Yeah, that's why we.
Well, coming out of the general fund wouldn't necessarily be taking away from.
Well, it's raising tax. If it's not taking away from something else and it's raising the tax.
We don't build a bridge, instead we put it into a building, a new classroom, or what, you know what I mean? It's one or the other, because if you're not gonna change what you're gonna raise in general revenues at the state, in income tax and sales tax, et cetera, et cetera, then if the bucket's not getting full more, you just give it a different.
And I don't know where they're, I, fifteen percent is in my mind, from talking with Adam about this.
I think it was fifty percent.
But I don't, I don't know, does it, do they tell, do they tell you where?
Well, they say Cato guarantees a state subsidy of fifteen percent of the total calculated essential programs and services cost to any school administration, so I think it's fifteen percent.
Yeah, that's what I get.
And other towns have, are part of this, it's, there are towns.
Yes, yes. There's a coalition, mostly coastal towns, but also lakefront towns.
Okay.
Those of us who have high-value real estate, but not necessarily high incomes to match.
Right, right. Let me see what I can find out.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Uh, business item number five. Um, we had discussed last, uh, meeting, um, the possibility of seeking other auditing services. Um, new information has come to light, Christine, you wanna discuss this for us, please?
Yes, there is a draft RFP in your packet, um, spring to review and consider to put forward in a later time if you'd like. Um, I had, when Bill Brewer dropped off the audit reports today, um, we were having a conversation and it occurred to me at that time that if we change auditors right now, when we're making some significant changes about bringing the school finances, the AP and payroll and the reporting to the town office, probably not the best time to change auditors. Maybe next year would be better. Bill Brewer definitely supports the changes that we put forward and he understands how our finances have worked over, you know, the past many, many years. Um, it's probably advisable for him to go through this process with us as we transition to bringing some of the school responsibilities over here.
And the discussions with the school are ongoing, considering that?
Yes.
Any thoughts?
Um, I, um, I think we should consider waiting, uh, a year until after the, these broad big changes have been adopted, developed and adopted. I think we should follow the town administrator's advice or suggestion or comment or whatever. However, you pose it.
Well, there's nothing saying Brewer wouldn't be as successful there if we put it out.
Right.
However, it's not guaranteed.
But if we implement a bunch of changes this year and then we change auditors and there's no, there's no familiarity historically with what West Bath is all about financially, and, uh, that would go a long way, I think, in, um, we need to consider that before we.
I think, uh, he's familiar with both, with both departments.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, I, I think, I think it might be advisable to wait just a little.
I agree, I think that we may find some stuff as we're moving stuff over from the school, but.
I think that we may find some stuff as we're moving stuff over from the school, but like we get somebody else involved and we're not exactly sure what we're doing or how we're doing and where the money comes from, we might need more of a bind than if we just ask we're moving some responsibility over, have someone who knows what we're moving over and moving.
That the that the auditor, as this process is is moving on, that the auditor has a history is valuable to to us.
Very valuable.
Yeah.
He also suggested that if we go through this transition, then in the future, our audit costs are almost guaranteed to go down because the time that he would or an auditor would be spending at the school department would be very minimal. Most of the audit would occur right here at the town office. And because that's what we do here, that's what we're skilled at, that the audit process would probably go quicker. So it's it's pretty much a guarantee that our financial burden for the audit would be less.
Somewhat less, yeah, yeah. It's a tendency.
So this is an ongoing discussion with the school right now, so you're not ready to have the presentation of what the changes might be yet?
Not yet.
Okay.
We're still finding out if we're going to have to use Tyler Technologies, which is a different software that the school uses because they they have a statutory charter of accounts that they have to follow.
Right, right.
So we're doing some homework to see if we can bring Tyler over here or if Trio will make some changes to accommodate the setup that we need to use. So there's there's some background work that's being done.
So how does this affect the other proposal from a month ago of changing our assessing?
Oh, well, this wouldn't really have anything to do with assessing.
I know, but weren't you talking about consolidating?
Yes.
The software.
Yes, and that's something I'm still hot to pursue.
Okay, so this was in your mind, that would still work out?
Absolutely. We definitely have some untapped capacity here that I want to take advantage of. And I think if we're providing services in the most effective way, that we'll find that we can make these changes and provide better services over the long term.
And that'd be mostly staying with Trio?
Yes.
That's your that's your preference?
Yes, the assessing would definitely stay with Trio.
Okay.
It would transition from vision to a complete Trio setup.
So this discussion is ongoing, to be continued?
To be continued.
Good one.
Yeah, still lots of background work to do. Want to make sure that if we execute this, that we do it as well as we can.
Execute it, that sounds.
Not like firing squad, but you know, move forward.
Thank you.
Did we have motion last meeting that we should investigate this?
What was it? How did we put it, Charlie?
I don't I did not find mine.
We can disconnect up.
We have the audit.
Oh.
The RFP.
You said we wanted one, but I don't know if it wasn't a form of a motion or conversation.
Prepare a request for proposals for audit services.
You can all just table it.
Yes, we can, we can table that. So I prepared the request, I prepared the RFP, so we're just not going to move forward with it.
Just for purposes of record keeping, because you have a motion to table.
I move that we table the RFP for for an audit until such time that we wish to pursue it again.
Let's second that motion. Any further discussion on that one? Then, all in favor of tabling? Thank you. This, when and if we become ready, this is a lovely question.
It's a nice start.
Yes, it is. And a nice list of priorities.
I got a question, I would just, I don't know if anybody even knows the answer, but on this list of volunteer groups, Jim, George, CPA, CVA, what is a CVA? Anybody know? It's not really important, I don't think.
Probably something very.
Something very virtual, um.
What's it have to do with?
Certified.
Certified valuation. Keeps all your keeps all your valuable personal records in the cloud.
Yeah, then it has something to do with assessing.
Yeah.
Valuation?
Yeah.
There we go.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Thank you for your educated guess. We were making uneducated guesses.
Believe me, I made it my whole career.
A certified valuation analyst, that's right. Excellent.
As the MACBA.
Now I'm looking at it a little further and there's a Boston address, that's pretty a lot.
Okay.
A lot of qualifications for CVA.
What if we did this one?
I know, National Association of Certified Valuators and Analysts, so that's where it comes from.
Okay, I'll get you.
It's a group of all the people who do that stuff and they set the standards to get certified.
To clone, in other words.
Business item number six. We have the potential, if you approve, for Kathleen Perry to serve on the member of the Board of Appeals and her term would end June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
I think she'd be an excellent contribution to the Board of Appeals.
She's served us well for two years of no appeals, so she's been very good luck to the town as far as appeals.
I mean, someone's doing his job.
No, the feels are often.
So could we have a motion to appoint her to the appeals board? Need one of those ones appointed. As if I did.
I'll make the motion.
My second. All in favor?
This leaves us with two open alternate positions. Walter Frank chose not to renew his appointment, so.
So.
But but the all the seats on the Board of Phil?
Yes, we have three regular members and two open alternate positions.
And are you advertising the alternates?
I will, thank you.
Just a quick dope, I'm still lacking a LS committee member.
What?
Oh, I thought we got you one, no, okay. Well, the alternate for the Board of Appeals also will serve as an LS committee member.
I would think that'd be a must.
That's a prerequisite. So we're looking for someone with building knowledge as well as an interest. Yes.
Cross training, cross training.
Got a little hot beans and squiggly things.
Business item number seven. It's that time of year when we are eligible to nominate a person for the Spirit of America Award. This is an award given for outstanding community service. We have a number of people who are outstanding. Is this something that we would want to consult with persons before we enter the nomination process? If somebody would object?
We weren't consulted, all allowed involved. We just said, you guys can nominate, you get to get, so it's okay.
Well, all right then.
I mean, no.
It's a surprise then.
Yeah, yeah, a pleasant one.
It did occur to me that that might be in addition to our own suggestions. You have one?
No, well, no, it's just being humorous with Dave. Sorry.
This is an important meeting, let's have no jokes. I'm not sure that a lot of people understand about the community, about the West Bath Spirit of America Foundation, maybe a note up on the board and then we can entertain nominations at the next meeting.
Sounds like a good idea.
I wonder if we could put something on the website to get community input on who they felt would be a good recommendation for the board.
What, vote?
Yes, I like it.
What what a.
Community participation?
What a radical idea. I like that, I like that. Let's do it, let's do it that way this year. We have a runoff election. When are when are the nominations due?
I think you have until perhaps June and if you don't nominate somebody, then the county has a right to make a nomination.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's.
Is that Joel?
It's like in August or something.
Joel.
Yeah.
It's a it's a county thing.
Yeah.
Well, that that would be fun.
I think it would be fun and I keep looking and seeing how many people watch this meeting and it seems to keep increasing and increasing, so I just think there's another way to include those people that maybe don't get it.
Yes, yeah, I like that. Let's do it that way.
Excellent.
That brings us to the end of the formal agenda. Is there any other other? Mr. Hennessy?
Just to close the door on this other, is the salt ship door fixed?
Yes, yes, it is, it's.
Ooh, damaged it already?
And did we survive the storm that we were afraid we were going to get two weeks ago?
We must have. Here we are.
Time for the next.
So did they find the problem the second time, Christine?
Yeah, I guess they did. I wasn't advised of what the problem was, but it's been fixed.
Okay.
So when we talk about the other, our camera up there, is there another way? I mean, if we see people backing up and waving their truck up the sand and we can't make out who they are with the license plate number, that's concerning, you know, so.
Yeah, I would like to know if we can reposition the camera and do something to make it.
I'm sure we can.
Better, yeah, because you can't, you know, people who are familiar with the people in this area couldn't pick out.
Yeah.
The men that were in that shot.
So how could we? I'm not even sure where it is located, but I'm sure it's higher than I can reach.
Yes.
Can it can it read a license plate?
What's that?
Can it read a license plate number?
They were supposed to be able to.
Yes, I thought. The resolution isn't good after you've.
No.
Not from its current position.
No.
But if we changed the position, it may be.
Maybe, we're going to have to play with it.
Yeah, if.
Yeah, I don't know where it is either. Maybe if somebody saw it there, they would discourage stealing sand.
Right.
You you can run that per se by your phone? You can view it?
I can view it on my phone. I did load it onto my phone.
But you could, it wasn't very clear, did you?
No, it's too far away. I think the camera is too far away.
So if somebody took their car up here or the truck and you had your camera, you could position it.
We can want it. Well, I believe that we could try to move it around and see what works, but I don't have a solution right off the top of my head.
You know, we're kind enough to let them have the sand. If they're going to go up and do that, I think we need to hold people accountable, especially how you work and.
And the cameras, if it's not working, we should.
We'll do it too if somebody would get in there.
Make it work.
Hurt themselves. We need to make sure that the security camera actually provides security.
Right.
Because right now it's pretty meaningless.
In name only.
Yeah, so you will further investigate?
Yes.
There was another issue. I you were saying that increasing numbers of people watching the video of this meeting, does this go over Bath Community TV? It doesn't, something completely different.
It's available on YouTube.
It's on YouTube?
Down on the town website.
Because I understood that Comcast was putting Bath Community TV in jeopardy with some of the changes they were going to make.
Money changes, no more fees.
Yeah, yeah. So I just was hoping that that wasn't affecting us.
It is not, thanks to our technical person here. Sophisticated computer.
Was the V for?
Right.
I have one.
Yes, sorry. Yes.
We talked about, you know, with about the West Bath Economic Development Corporation, whether it needs to survive or not. We never really came to a conclusion, but we were in the process of selling the vast majority of the business park. And the thing is, is having run the thing for six years, the big thing is the seller seller property, which we've done, and what's left? I mean, what's left is, she reminded me, because she was filling out the questionnaire for the premium for the director's insurance, we're spending money on something, do we need to spend it or not? And what we have left, I mean, outside of the sale, the only stuff, when we had most of the property, I was involved in filing main forest service paperwork because we had proposed and got a license for a harvest, which never happened until we sold it. And then the other thing was, we have some requirements, I think they're annual, with main DEP because we still own the road and we have storm drains which go into a wetland area. And so there's a report we have to file. But do we need a whole corporation to do that or is that something that the town administrator can work with whoever we need to create it like an engineer says, you know, for very little money, because I'm not going to do it anyway, you know, but we have to file a report and we hire whoever's appropriate, an engineer to say, you know, here's a two-page report, that's all you need to do. And then the select board doesn't, doesn't, you know, authorizes her to do it or whatever, rather than have this corporation still exist and have to pay for director's insurance just in case and really have nothing else to do except the DEP annual filing for storm drainage maintenance. I mean, if that's all we have left, then the only other thing really left is on the road is the corporation never owned the road. The town, it never came over.
Right.
So anything to do with title or anything to do with the road would be with the board, not with the corporation. So why do we have a corporation?
Hmm.
And the other thing is the money that we've set aside to do, quote, road maintenance, which is going to be minimal under our agreement, purchase and sale agreement, is under your control, the board's control, not the corporation's control. So it makes it even more so like, why bother? And the corporation hasn't filed with the Secretary of State in a while, so in fact, we're well, we're not defunct, we're just, we're listed, but we're not active. And at some point, the Secretary of State will eliminate us off the list, but we might as well make it official.
Yeah, I did call the secret, I called the Secretary of State a couple of weeks ago and we are administratively dissolved at this point.
Yeah, we are dissolved.
So I I asked them if, from their perspective, if we had to do anything additional to recognize the dissolution and they said, no, not from their perspective.
Yeah.
So this this select actually voted at their last meeting to recognize the dissolution of the corporation, but still there's the committee. So you might consider either ending the committee's activities or just leaving them as a committee for different purposes. I don't know if there would be any other item that they would need to pick up and work on.
No, I mean, our other personnel. Historically. We don't mix and match any specific committee's job description. Once the mission's fulfilled, the committee will be dissolved and if we need something else done, we'll form a committee to do that.
Right, right. So should we do something official at the next? So should we do something official at the next meeting? Let's do that.
I think that, I'm glad you brought that up.
I, I, I mean, the, the corporation suffers, it's dissolved at the state, at the Secretary of State. We're bound to just dissolve the committee and everything else.
Yeah.
The other loose end is, uh, was it like $3,000 left in the account?
Yeah, but that, that, uh, you know, my understanding, talking with Adam, was that was sort of set aside just to sit there in case we have to do something in road maintenance. Or if we have to, for, for instance, and I don't know if we need to do this, but if we have to spend a few hundred bucks once a year to have a civil engineer help us write and file the storm drain maintenance report with the DEP, I mean, however many thousands, that's going to, you know, if we're only spending a few hundred bucks a year to have a civil, basically some, you know, a two-page document that you send in to the DEP, because we got two cold, two storm drains. I mean, how much can it be? And that, again, that's money under your control, not the, not the commit, the, the board of the corporation doesn't even exist now. That's my recollection, that, uh, the money is just budgeted and sitting there. It would be this a lot easier.
We just leave it.
Well, and try to, to have to raise 150 bucks. Yeah, I, it's just, that way, the warrant, it's, it's there for this purpose. But we, we won't draw unless we have to. It'll be minimalized.
It'd be nice to know, just to refresh memories, how much is in that fund though?
It's not much.
I think, I think it's $3,000, I think.
Yeah, because we, we had six or seven and we used a budget to pay for the closing costs. And, and that, here it is, right, it's probably only two, $3,000 left. It should just sit there to do this stuff.
Yeah.
So you don't have to go out and make a big deal out of it. Just put it in.
$4,000.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So anyway.
It's Jay.
I have some response to the question that you asked.
Yes.
Would you like to hear?
Yes.
This is from the policy expert. Um, there are multiple proposals in, I mean, bills in to modify the school funding formula. He says he'll follow up to see if there are any provisions that might help West Bath.
Yeah.
Um, but I'm betting they've already explored that.
Yeah.
Um, minimum receivers get a percentage of their specialized costs that that percentage is set to go up from 33 to 40, but he's gonna double check that. Um, so they will receive at least some more money. I understand the concern. I mentioned that there'd been a change and had to go to add to the budget because of increased specialized cost. Um, I understand the concerns, but I would caution coming out in support of any at this time. While the proposal is written, says it's new money, so it won't offset anyone else while it might, which was your concern here, um, it won't upset anyone else while it might be new, well, this is a few things missing here. Um, if we allocate 50 million in new money, those funds, we won't put into the general formula for the non-minimal receivers like RSU1.
Yeah.
Uh, I also, I'm always wary of arbitrary, arbitrary floors. They work just fine when finances are good, but cause big problems if there's an economic downturn.
Yeah.
This would not be as bad as some I have seen, but still concerning. So he offers to talk to me about it. And then there's another staff person said, um, during the previous administration, DOE did, um, respond to sudden spikes in specialized costs, which we knew about. And we did explore. I don't think it helped. Um, I don't, and then the governor's budget could make a big difference. And we're about 10 or 10 days or so left away from finding out what the budget is, so we should have some work.
Okay, thank you.
So more to, to find out, but hot off the presses.
Yes, nice. That's fast response.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, they're wonderful, being helpful.
Yes, and I just want to mention the county budget committee. Um, Peter and David, you have had seats on the county budget committee. The caucus is coming up February 5th.
They have two, two years left in mind.
Yes.
I got done this year.
You got done?
I got done, yeah.
So you're not going to continue with it?
No.
Okay. Julie wanted me to clarify who was doing what.
So an elected official from West Bath will be, will need to serve?
From this district.
From this district.
It's not mandatory to serve. It's, uh,
Right.
Do you want, it's an opportunity if you want to.
It's an opportunity for someone inside.
In the district, in our district. There's three districts.
Right. Who in our district consists of what areas?
West Bath, Pittsburgh.
And part of that.
Oh, here it is, okay. Let's see. Or else like Georgetown, Pittsburgh, Richmond, Woolwich, West Bath, District Three. So David will continue till 2021. And then there's two other seats. Somebody from Pittsburgh is interested. I can't remember the name.
Chris Nixon?
That sounds right.
One of the Slechman and Pittsburgh.
So there would be one other.
Is replacing Julie.
Position available. But the caucus is on February 5th, if anybody would like to attend that.
Well, the town officials vote that night.
Yeah.
So if you go, you can chase the vote.
If we, if we have anybody that's interested in running, then all three of us need to attend because all three of us are the only people who can vote.
But how can we do that with a whole traffic light situation?
It's early, it's, it's early, it's early.
Yeah, and it, it doesn't. It's over literally in a blink of an eye.
It's like, uh, we're in like flashing, it's done that last.
It should be a.
But if, no, if, if somebody's interested in, in running, we have to show up because we only have three votes. If somebody from, say, safe Bath wants to run, even though it's not anymore in the district, it used to be. I mean, they, they have, what, about 11 votes because that's how many city councils have us to have. So, and we, we've been bumped up four, so if anybody, the position is for an elected official, so it'd be either one of you two. So if any, anyone of you were interested, then all three of us need to show up.
Now, could it be a school board member? You could get them to validate to really stack the, stack the floor.
Assistant board.
Yeah.
Um, we were going to have executive session. Will you need to adjourn to that? We motion for executive session?
Okay, um, I made motion that we enter into an executive session pursuant to Title I, MRSA, Section 4056A of the Forces of Special Forces and Militia.